We'd like to call the order, the September 26th meeting of the Clive City Council with the clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Edwards here. Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
McCoy is not here yet. Michael Laney.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Very good, if you all rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda.
With approval.
Second. Motion second approve of the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have our assistant presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Pete, do we have anyone online?
No, your honor.
Very well, just a reminder, we follow the pillars of character counts in our meetings. Next, we have consent.
With approval.
Second.
Motion second on consent, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And little clerk, please post that vote. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Next up, we have our action items. First item is a public hearing. Did we publish appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, it's published in the Des Moines Register on September 9th, 2024.
Very good, thank you. Richard.
Thank you. Tonight, we have before you consideration of the rebid package number six for the Greenbelt Landing project. This represents the last and final contract for this project moving forward. We got the new bids on September 18th, and there were two bidders with the low being $2,518,000 for that. It was still over the engineer's estimate, but overall, when combined with all the other construction projects, it's 1.5% under the total engineer's estimate for the project. So, we felt like it was an appropriate bid, saved us about $300,000 based on the revisions and kind of clarifications we did from the previous time it was bid. So, we'd recommend moving forward with this bid.
Any questions for Richard?
We've closed the public hearing.
Second.
Motion saying close to public hearing. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote. Public hearing is closed by affirmative vote with four.
Move a resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution approving plans and specs. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk, please post that vote? And that passes with four affirmative votes.
Move to receive the bids.
Second.
Motion second to receive the bids, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? And that passes with four affirmative.
And move the resolution awarding the contract to capital and construction for $2.5 million.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote?
Not displaying the vote, but it is.
Four affirmative. Four affirmative votes for the amount indicated in item C. All right, next up is a public hearing. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yeah, the thing was published September 10th, 2024 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Good evening, mayor and council. Excuse me, the two hearings this evening, so I'm presenting on items two, three, and three A are for the borrowing of our tax increment financing capital improvement projects for this fiscal year. Two projects are considered essential while the other project is identified in our urban renewal plan. So, that's why we're holding two hearings. The memo lists the capital improvement projects that we're seeking funding for, and there's also included a timeline for this process on the sale of bonds. The action will prove our intent to enter into these agreements. The resolution gives us authority to do so. If there are any questions.
Questions for Liz? Otherwise.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote?
I got nothing.
At the e-vote.
Gotcha.
I learned that from Chicago.
And that passes with four affirmative votes. Tell us about the second one.
The second one is the, is a project that's identified in the urban renewal plan, so therefore, we have to do a similar process by having a public hearing.
And did we publish the proper notice?
Yes, this one was published September 10th, 2024 in the Des Moines Register.
Any further questions for Liz?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? And that public hearing is closed by with four affirmative votes.
Move the resolution, take additional action on proposals to enter loan agreements and combining loan agreements.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post those votes?
Your honor, if I can mention to you why you're voting on this, we did have our rating call with S&amp;P earlier this week on Tuesday to try to seek that maybe AAA opportunity. And so, we're following up on some questions that they had. This is the first time that they've ever rated us before, and we'll have some, hopefully some news on that by the next council meeting in terms of what their rating will be.
Very good.
For this bond issue.
Resolution passes with four affirmative votes. Liz, you're still here.
I am, I am. The next item is we're repealing a TIF ordinance. So, this is a district within the large urban renewal plan area, and it's, the 20-year life is expiring. So, per state code, we need to repeal it and file it with the county auditor. And we only have one expiring TIF ordinance this year. And if you'd like, you could waive the second and third readings as we've done in the past. So, that's consideration.
Questions for Liz?
Move that ordinance number 1151. Well, I'm sorry, move to suspend.
How about I take over? Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1151. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote?
Vote.
Vote. And you got my voting rights back? Put your glasses on.
Don't abstain.
How are you planning?
I just did.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right, so we have waived the rules. Now what?
Prove.
All right.
Move that ordinance number.
1151.
Number 1151 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk, please post that vote?
Teamwork, Klein.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
There's no.
That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1151 is declared to have been enacted. Next, Matthew, you're.
So, similar to what we did at the last council meeting, tonight, I'll present three proposed ordinances. These ordinances are intended to simply align our local regulations with state law and to ensure compliance with the updated statutory requirements that arose from the most recent legislative session. There are extensive memos in your packets if you want to dig into the fine details, but I'll just hit the highlights and answer any questions if they come up. The first one is ordinance 1152, amending provisions pertaining to operating budget preparation. This impacted us this year. The ordinance outlines procedures preparing for preparing and reporting the city's operating budget, including timelines for filing reports, conducting public hearings, and communicating with property owners. So, that was the new budget process that we went through this year, and that would codify it for us. The next one, what's that?
Why don't we act on that one?
You want to do it?
Move that ordinance number 1152.
You want us to waive or do we just?
We want to waive the rules.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. Well, that's my job. Move that ordinance number 1152 be considered for the, requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to 1152.
Second.
Second to suspend the rules, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? So, we suspended the rules by a vote of five to zero. Would someone like to? Move that ordinance number, I thought that was Klein's job. Move that ordinance number 1152 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post the vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1152 is declared to have been enacted.
You just want to see me do this, don't you?
Why don't you get your steps in then?
That's right.
Okay, so the next one is ordinance 1153, amending provisions pertaining to bond requirements. This amendment updates the requirement related to surety bonds for city officials like yourself and employees, including an option to use an insurance policy in place of a bond, which we're already doing. This just formalizes that process. I would recommend waiving the need for three readings and going to final adoption.
Any questions for Matthew? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to waive the rules from someone. Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? Rules are suspended by a vote of five to zero. Move that ordinance number 1153 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1153 is declared to have been enacted.
And the final one for tonight, we do have one more that'll come to the next meeting, but final one for tonight is 1154, an amendment, provisions pertaining to pedestrians right of way. This update is specifically addressing the definitions related to traffic regulations and the rules governing pedestrians right of way. This one really just expanded on definitions to help us clarify what is a vehicle, what isn't a vehicle, what is a pedestrian, what isn't a pedestrian, and where are they allowed to go and who yields to them when? Doesn't really change a whole lot, other than helps us to identify, is it appropriate to yield to somebody in a crosswalk, whether it's marked or unmarked, that sort of thing? So, it just clarifies those little details, and I would recommend waiving and going to adoption.
Questions for Matthew on this one?
I'll move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting for be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1154.
Second.
Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? Well done, grasshopper.
I learn from the best.
And the rules are suspended by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1154 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And clerk, please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1154 is declared to have been enacted. Doug, I think it's your turn.
Kind of hoping you're gonna take care of this.
Well, there are times when that would be the case. We don't have to deprive you.
Thank you. Good evening. The item before you is typically on your consent agenda, just ended up in the action items out of a mistake from my, my group. All we're doing here is setting a public hearing for consideration of bids associated with the demolition of 2814 W Avenue. That's property that we acquired earlier this year and is associated with right of way for the first phase of Alice's Road improvements. So, again, we have a bid opening. Established and a public hearing recommended to you tonight for October 24th for consideration of those plans, specifications, and bids.
Questions for Doug?
Move the resolution.
Technicality, does this need to state the date when you're setting a public hearing or no? That's in the packet.
It's in the resolution.
It has to be in the resolution. It doesn't have to be on the, it's in the resolution.
Well, typically, we typically put it in parentheses right after, and we just didn't, that didn't happen on this one, but we will get that in the future.
Scripters. It's covered, I got it.
Second.
We have a motion a second.
Who was the second?
Okay. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk, please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have PFM.
Thank you, your honor. Tonight, we have a presentation of a project that I know has been a top priority of this council, and it was identified as a top priority, your latest strategic plan update, and this is really phase one of that effort in terms of what we've kind of called the DIP study. But it starts with a pretty extensive financial assessment of really what's the city of Clive's why and what is truly our runway in terms of as we reach build out as a community here over the next five years, under the current kind of revenue climate and service, delivery systems that we have, you know, how long is that going to last under our current arrangement as new development starts to lessen? And we're primarily focused on infill and redevelopment in our community. So, the, what's laid out for you tonight, and we have Randy Bauer here from PFM, who'll go into more detail and also be happy to entertain council's questions, is we laid out kind of three different scope areas with scope one, which is, is the amount of work that's being requested tonight to move forward with. It's really that deep financial assessment to understand what Clive's why is working with departments to really do that full 10-year projection in terms of what we know today. Of course, we can't have a crystal ball for everything, but based on the current revenue structure that we have, and also if we get some changes in the middle of this work during the next legislative session, we would adjust to that. But then, and in terms of our current service delivery model. And so, what does that look like? So, that would be under scope one. That'd be quite an extensive work with the PFM team and our departments on building that out. Randy represents kind of the budget and management consulting arm of PFM. So, we would also integrate his team's work along with the work that PFM already does for us in terms of our debt, debt schedule, debt planning, TIF, our tax agreement financing planning, and then our utility cash flows that the council sees every year. So, we already have that work under retainer with Suzanne and Jen and Hurt and their team. And so, we would be integrating these all together to give a full picture of both operational funds, capital debt funds, and then our utility funds and our business units. So, pretty excited to bring this forward to you as, as Pete and myself have shared, we've been kind of looking for the right partner for, for this particular project, and we feel like we found that with PFM, and we included in the agenda packet kind of the memo that really outlines what we were working on in terms of our kind of scope or charge to our partner to work on this particular project. And was really interesting, and I mentioned a little bit earlier, the, the S&amp;P call that we had earlier this week. One thing that bond rating agencies are asking quite a bit is not just about what your current financial practices are, but what are you doing to anticipate the future? And during that call, I actually mentioned that we were presenting this to the council later in the week that we're looking at doing this type of work, and they were very interested in that, you know, hearing us kind of lay out, how can we be proactive with the city's financial future, even looking as far out as 10 years, which again, can get pretty cloudy when you get that far out. But I already, but I also mentioned too, that we already do almost, you know, three to four year projections just in our regular budgeting process, and that carries weight, you know, with those bond rating agencies when they're looking at what is a, you know, cities or an entity's financial health. And so, so that's really the, the scope one, which we want to focus on tonight, but I do want to briefly mention, and, and Randy can, will as well, in terms of scope two, service two, and service three, where service two is that community benchmarking. You know, we were talking with Randy and his team about this project, they jumped right in when we talked about the desire to do some community benchmarking, and not just cities that look like Clive today, but cities that are maybe 10 years ahead of us in terms of been built out in a ring suburb 10 years out. And, you know, Randy already gave rattled off a list of potential communities that we could look at that he's already worked with or has an awareness of that would be a part of this analysis. But we feel like if service one needs to happen, and then service two would come in later, and we would come back to the council when we're ready to move forward with that. And then ultimately have those two pieces packaged for you for strategic planning next year, where then we can start asking, showing that to you and really start asking some questions of what you want to see if we were to move forward with service three that's outlined in the scope document. And that is really that big scenario planning of what happens if this certain policy is in place, or what happens if the legislature decides to put a hard cap on property tax revenues? What does that look like in terms of our financial future? And ask the council to give us kind of what you would like us to model, and obviously staff and PFM, we would come up with some recommendations as well. But there's no need to jump into that third service scope quite yet. We need to work through those first two. And so, that's what, but we wanted to outline the whole path for you tonight to kind of see what we're working towards. And what was also included in the packet were some examples from Randy's team's work in other parts of the community. I just mentioned that I came from Pittsburgh, I was where the ICMA conference was this last weekend, and as I was talking to Randy about that, he mentioned that that was a community that, that PFM worked with in terms of Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania has a program where they provide services to distressed communities and help them work through their, out of their distress, if you will. And Pittsburgh, I think you told me, was one of the only cities in Pittsburgh, in Pennsylvania that's actually worked out of the program to success. I think I included, if I remember in the packet, example of another Pennsylvania community that they've worked with in terms of working through that, and then an example of a California community where they were facing some kind of unique revenue constraints with casino revenues in their case, and kind of a presentation of how PFM laid out, here are the decisions before you and, and some options for you to take. So, we wanted to provide those as some examples to kind of give you a sense of, of the work that's involved with this type of analysis. But with that, I wanted to kind of, that be kind of the primer for the discussion tonight, and I will let Randy kind of fill in where I may missed some things and, and give a little bit more background on PFM and his team.
Real quick, before we move to that, you, you were talking about the timeline for the different service, one, two, and three. And I think you mentioned service three would be kind of like for strategic planning next year. Is that just when it would be presented? Because I think I remember reading that we could do the services in parallel to kind of get it done in a six-month period instead of running them in series, where I think one of them was projected to be like two to four months, and then the other two were four to six.
You could do them overlapping. What I would say to you is, I, I would think we would want, I would want you to see the results of service one and two, and Randy can speak to this a little bit too, before you made decisions on service three, in terms of what scenarios you want it. Once you know the why, or once you see where, let's say, how long the runway is through service one, then I would want to use that to inform where we're using those dollars in service three to make sure we're running the scenarios that make sense for us. So, I, it could be overlapping. I think that, that's probably my initial reaction to why I wouldn't recommend doing that. Number two, I think it's frankly a capacity thing too for your staff in terms of trying to do all three of those at the same time, because we're, what we're projecting, and I wanted to get this in front of you because we have this, this scope of services to present to you, but we're really planning from a staff standpoint to ramp this work up with PFM, kind of on the tail end of the budget, the development, budget development process on the staff's end. So, it's really going to be after the first of the year, because right now, we're kind of heavy deep into the CIP development process and now the operating budget development. So, putting this load on top of that for all the departments is kind of a big ask at the same time as they're developing their budgets for proposal to you. And so, that's why we were thinking kind of, and this is what I've shared with Randy, kind of after the first of the year, really starting in January and February with the scope that you're going to see here to, that you're seeing here tonight for service one, layering in two, and then giving you, working with the council and all that information for you to define how you want to see scope three is how I would lay, that's, that's how I'm projecting it today.
I was actually thinking the other way, like it would just drag it out for staff for like nine months.
Oh, in terms of it being too long, yeah.
Right.
So, for us, it's, and again, Randy can speak to, I think the service two scope is, obviously, it's a smaller scope and a little bit quicker turnaround than one and three. We know one is going to be the biggest lift internally in terms of working with, because he needs the deep, him and his team need a deep dive with all of our departments to make sure he fully understands what we're looking at in terms of our current service delivery model, and what ideas do we have at a staff level? And there might even be some council engagement on that too, of what you want to see in terms of how we project things out. So, there might be a little bit of an iterative process in there. We wanted to make sure we provide some time for that. Randy, what, what else could I, do you want to share?
Well, first of all, I think the city manager's explanation and kind of laying the groundwork was, was really helpful, much of which I would have covered, and now I don't have to.
All right, still something.
So, no, no, and so, good evening, mayor and members of council. I'm Randy Bauer. I'm a director at PFM. I've been at PFM for almost 20 years, which I can hardly believe. And before that, I spent about 18 years in state government. I remember Susan very well from our, the time when I was budget director under Tom Vilsack, and Susan, of course, was lobbying effectively, I might add. And before that, I'd also been on, I was senate staff and had primarily focused on tax, budget, and economic development issues. So, I was hired by PFM in its management and budget consulting practice almost 20 years ago. The management and budget consulting practice, you all are, I think, fairly familiar with PFM's financial advisory services, where we, that's how PFM started, and it's still our largest component. And we have been ranked as the top-ranked financial advisor for, independent financial advisor for state and local governments for over 25 years, and that's on either par amount of bonds sold or number of issuances. That continues to be our largest area of focus, but about 20 years ago, there was a determination by leadership at PFM that the clients needed more than just financial advisory services, that they were also interested in assistance on the operational side of government. And that's what the management and budget consulting practice has done. And it, it started in about 1992, and when I was hired in 2005, all of the focus and all of the management budget consulting practice was in our Philadelphia, our, our headquarters office, and it was mostly eastern part of the US centric. So, part of my charge was to build out the practice in the Midwest, and most of my clients over the 20 years have been in the central time zone. All of the states surrounding Iowa, with the exception of South Dakota, have done multiple projects in, done a couple of projects in, in Iowa as well. One was a shared services study for the city of Oskaloosa, another was a financial study and benchmarking for Xenia Rural Water System. My wife and I live in the Xenia Rural Water System catchment area, and I effectively doubled our water rates when we finished that study. So, you know, we approached this work from what, where do the numbers take us and not necessarily from any personal interest. The areas that the management budget consulting practice primarily focuses on, one is multi-year financial plans, and that's really where we got our start. And we started with distressed cities, but over time, we have built out that practice. So, you can find governments along the spectrum from distressed cities to AAA-rated credits that have found that, that multi-year financial plan, and that's really a variant of what we'll be doing with you is useful as both a planning tool and also to be thinking strategically about where you want to go with city, both in terms of services and obviously the revenues that support them. We also do a lot of consulting around workforce. It includes studies around salaries and benefits. We do collective bargaining assistance for state and local governments as well as interest arbitration assistance. The area that I mostly focus on is in our economics and taxation strategy area, and that's both economic development and what do you do with your tax structure? How do you maximize revenue? And then, the, the other area that we're fairly involved with is just, is efficiency for government operations, and that's looking at everything from shared services, opportunities for consolidation, and any other kinds of methods that might be helpful for our government in terms of making it more efficient and more effective. Generally, these are all combined, so the component parts that we work with are, are interdisciplinary, and most projects involve people that are subject matter experts in, in each of those categories. So, projects that I've worked on that are relevant to this one, several years ago, I led a multi-year financial plan for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, also done the same for St. Louis Public Schools. They had lost their state accreditation, and through some of the work that we did and, and other initiatives as well, they were able to regain their accreditation. I mentioned a couple of projects that I've also done in Iowa, and multiple projects, as I said. I said, in, in the surrounding states. So I think that Matt did a really good job of kind of teeing up what we would be doing for you and with you in each of the subject areas. And the first one is intensive in terms of we have to gather data and we have to understand it, both your financial data and other kinds of management and information. And that is engaging with departments and there's a lot of back and forth that goes on in that part of the process. So as Matt said, that is where there will be a lot of need for staff time. And I think the way that it's been laid out is that that would start at the beginning of 2025. I would lead that effort, but I would certainly be joined by several members of our PFM project team. One would be an Excel modeler. The one that I will probably use is one of our senior analysts, her name is Mallory, Mallory Richards. She's worked with me on multiple major projects, including recently a revenue study for the city of Chicago. Right now, we're also doing an economic development incentive study for the state of Wisconsin, and she's been the lead analyst on both of those. She came to us from S and P and she was a real estate analyst there. So she has a lot of experience that will be helpful for the work that we'll be doing.
I did have a question on that.
Sure.
And this is maybe a little too in the weeds, but with, with Excel, I know there's limitations on visualization options. Would you guys be able to put that into like a Power BI platform or anything like that where you can do a little more, you know, visualization and drill downs with, with optionality and menus?
We have, we have a quantitative strategies group that does cartwheels with Excel. So we build Visual Basic into the Excel model. So there are a lot of opportunities for developing charts and graphs. But if you really wanted to go real deep into a dive, we have a product called Scenario, which is even, even more advanced, but it might be the kind of thing where it's, you want to walk before you run in the terms of what we would develop for you. Our Excel models are, they're all open source. There's no black box associated with them. All the formulas are, you know, right in the, in the Excel documents themselves, but they're very complex. We have usually 10 to 20 tabs of different aspects that, that, that the model builds in that we then pull data from to create the assumptions around the model. Really what the model is doing is taking your historical data, building in input from your staff and subject matter experts to develop assumptions around how things are going to change over time. And it allows you to build scenarios. So you don't just have one set of assumptions and that's all that you can look at. You actually can build multiple scenarios with different factors of what, when things are going to happen, what's going to happen, and then you can compare them in real time also. So it's, as I said, we've probably done over a hundred of these kinds of models for governments, many of whom use it on a regular basis as part of their budget process.
Council member two, what I would add in is we have currently been using a system with our financial software. It's called MyExcel where it integrates directly into an Excel. And so one thing that we were thinking about when we were reviewing the scope and kind of the, the train the trainer piece that comes with Service One is how we can integrate it with some of our existing systems that we use and have our financial software kind of embedded in it. So then when we're made, you know, because the hope that the desire is, is to build this model and then have internal staff maintain it and then maybe get some quality checks done by, by PFM is to also have that. But, but I think we can build on that to maybe do better visualization in the future. But our hope is too, to kind of integrate it with our current system.
And that's what I was kind of thinking is, you know, if, if this is a highly, and it sounds like it's not, but if it's a highly proprietary formulaic model that, you know, you've got to have 20 or 25 years of experience, it's going to be very hard for us.
To sustain it.
Sustain that, manipulate it as needed, whereas, you know, a lot of time, and Power BI was probably just one example of that. It does make a little more, you know, you get a UI, people without technical skill like myself can go in and do some options.
And I also shared with the city manager, the type of documentation that we, we put together. So it's, there's like 70, 80 pages usually with arrows and this is where you, you fill this in. So it's not as if we turn the model, because we will turn the model over to you and then it's like, you know, see you later. The good news is we have an enduring relationship with the city of Clive. Our financial advisory practice works very closely with staff. Suzanne is a managing director in our Des Moines office. We will work hand in hand with them. And the beautiful thing is that they already develop a lot of models that we should, we will integrate into what we develop for the city. So in that respect, the, the cost for this is actually less than what we normally would otherwise have it at, because we're able to build on what you've already bought from us. And so that, we're excited about that. We've done similar kinds of work with our financial advisory practice in other places around the country, but we haven't really done that here in the Des Moines area. So we think that's going to be really useful. They understand, I mean, I still remember a fair amount of stuff about tax policy and what the state does to local governments from my days in state government. But Suzanne and Jen and, and other members in the Des Moines office are, are in it day to day right now. So I think between us, we're going to be able to bring you a level of understanding of what's going on and what may go on in the future that you won't find from any other firm. That's kind of the background on the first piece. And the city manager is right, we've already, we benchmark on almost every project that we do. So for us, that secondary piece is, is really, it's pretty easy for us to undertake. We do outreach to governments. We do electronic surveys. We have access to some of our own work, just because we work with so many local governments around the country. So we have already identified, as Matt said, a cohort of cities that have some of the same characteristics. They're, they're interring suburbs that are landlocked in particular. We've looked at them in terms of the age of their housing stock and in terms of when they stopped growing, because you know, you're still growing and that's a good thing. But the point is to look forward to when that may not be the case and when you may not have any more developable land. So we've looked at cities both in the suburbs, suburbs of Minneapolis, St. Paul, Chicago, Kansas City and St. Louis. And the good news is we've worked in all, all those areas. So we're familiar with, say, some of them are our clients. And again, that gives us both an opportunity to understand how they've changed, but we also have network, you know, we can reach out to people in those cities that we're working with. So we think that'll be a part of the project that'll be really important and will provide you a lot of useful information. It won't take us as much work as the other two. And the la, I, I tend to agree that you need to stage these because you're really not going to know what to do in the third piece until you've worked the first two, which isn't to say some parts of it couldn't be conducted at the same time. That again, gets into a capacity issue for the city as much as it is for our PFM team. But that piece we also would bring in, I, I work in economic development, but some aspects of economic development, like housing issues and some of the community development and redevelopment areas, we have better subject matter expertise and we of course would bring them into the project also. I would manage it, but we would have greater subject matter expertise than I could provide also. So that's how we see the pieces, you know, fitting together. And we were really excited about the opportunity to work with you all.
How long is phase one?
Phase one, I think it's about four months, if I recall, you know, it, all these things, you know, consultant or anything is, it depends. So it depends on the availability of data, depends on the availability of staff and subject matter experts. But if, if everything is firing right, I think it's probably about four months.
Then we roll directly into phase two, or will it be coming back to us after phase one to say, okay, here's what we found?
I think that's up to you all.
Yeah, I, I think there'll be a check in that I'll want to do with you all before we move forward with Scope Two. You know, I could see that one still kind of being on a path where it's overlapping a little bit of phase one. But I wanted to make sure that we do a check in with you all before we jump into phase two, just to, just to give you a sense of where we're headed with that financial analysis. And it's an opportunity for us to come back and have some more of this conversation, jump into phase two, and then that whole deliverable, all that put together for then the conversation next year. And then we can ultimately decide if and when or what we want to do with Scope Three.
How long do you see stage two lasting, the benchmarking?
You know, benchmarking is always, you're a little bit at, you're, you're a little bit held hostage by the, by the benchmark communities. But, and to the extent you do electronic surveys, you have to give them enough time to respond, although we, we do sometimes just do, you set up conference calls with them also. A couple of months is probably what I would think would, depending again on if there's overlap and, and I just have to make sure we've got staff that fits with that. But I, I'd say probably a couple of months.
Randy, do the hourly rates hold for the duration of the project?
Yes.
Will those change at the beginning?
Yeah. We, we, in this, in the engagement letter, we identified the hourly rates and they would stay constant through the entirety of the project.
Page three, Randy, how long do you see that lasting then?
You know, that's a little bit harder to know for, for sure, just because some of phase three, how it lays out, I think is going to depend on what comes out of phase one in particular. But it's probably, it's for probably four to six months would be my guess.
Looking at a year-long process.
Probably.
For the most part.
That, yeah, and we could, we could scrunch it together a little bit. I think that's again, something we're happy to work with you all. Projects like this, you know, we don't have cookie cutter projects. They really are each individual. So we're happy to continue to engage and, you know, there may be some, an iterative nature to some of it, but I don't think it would stretch out longer than a year.
And I think it, to Randy's point, I think for Scope Three in particular is depending on what we want to look at.
Right.
What kind of scenarios we want to run. And, you know, we also have the base model, the base case kind of set up and ready to go. But if it's a certain kind of policy scenario that we want to run, like for example, what would it look like for Clive's tax base if we had more densification of certain parts of our community as we redevelop? So that might require us pulling certain kind of data from other communities that might take more time. It just depends on kind of what scenarios we want to run. I, I would feel that would drive that schedule and how many we want to do, right? In terms of different scenarios, in terms of looking at those different kinds of policies from that Scope Three.
And would there be an opportunity in Scope Three to bring in potentially like external subject matter experts? I'm just thinking of like Susan's mentioned Dallas County Economic Development, right? So I don't know if that'd be an opportunity to have them give their perspective as well. I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm wondering if that's even an option.
I, I mean, I'd have to, have to see what it looked like to know whether or not, I mean, we do engage outside subject matter experts on, on some things. So for example, one of the subject matter experts that we have a relationship is a guy named Bill Fulton. Bill Fulton was the head of the Kinder Institute of Urban Governments at Rice University. Before that, he'd been the Director of Economic Development for the city of San Diego, and he'd also been the mayor of a city in, in California. So I mean, and he's a national expert on a lot of aspects of, of economic development, including housing. So we have some of those kinds of resources that are part of a network that we, that we bring together. But if there are, you know, subject matter experts that you all identify that could add to the team and certainly willing to consider, just to see if that would actually provide more expertise than what we already would have on the team.
Well, if there's any other questions, Your Honor, we would recommend approval of the resolution to move forward with Service One and get started here after the first of the year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution. Further discussion being done with council, please vote. And we would please post that vote. Yeah, I'm actually just kind of letting it do its thing. I thought that it, you didn't have to refresh. You do?
Are you affirming? Hit the EVO button in the top left.
Abstain.
There's a, yeah, there's a button in your top left to refresh.
You just added.
All right. With that figured out, it passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Might I add one thing? You're having met on Senate staff in Iowa, your proceedings are much tidier when it comes to the legislative process.
This is a new voting system too.
But that, that bar though, that you just said was really, really, really low, super low. So I don't know if that was a compliment or an insult. With that, we'll move on to correspondence. We're all in your pocket. Very good. Thank you very much. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honors. A number of items to quickly move through. We're making good progress on the three to five Dallas County Supervisors Education Campaign. This week, we have, I think, got to 90% on the script for the proposed animated video. And with that, then the vast majority of the Q and A, by the end of next week, we will have gone through a round of edits and we will stay on project, on track to deliver all of those education assets in that first full week of October, which will give us a little less than a month, full three weeks to do that good education work across Dallas County communities. So more to come on that. Two pieces of earned media today. One, the mayor and I did a recorded radio interview with WHO Radio on the survey slash economic strategic priorities release that we put out on Tuesday. I think that ended up being a good interview and we look forward to seeing what it sounds like on Saturday morning when we run the first time, but then it'll be running next week too. The other one was about the trail closure that would be in place October 1st, starting October 1st, just down the way here, at the interstate bridge over the Greenbelt Trail. I expect tomorrow that we're going to get quite a bit more activity on that. I did an interview with KCCI at the bridge this afternoon. That usually sparks the other television stations and the register. So we hope they'll pick it up because this is going to be a very important story. Probably one of the most important outlets that we got to today though, we emailed all the release directly to some of the central Iowa trail groups that keep this information right out there in front of cyclists especially, but other kinds of trail users. We want those folks not to be surprised when we get to this next week and certainly want them to understand that in all of this, there is a plan, a good plan, plan that's going to improve the trail surface, that's going to get us more connectivity up into Urbandale, better connections through the interstate corridor on the Rackham River Trail. Lot of wins for everybody who likes that, using that, that beautiful amenity. So we'll keep emphasizing that outcome that we're driving toward with all of our partners. Swanson House update, Historical Society has done a very nice job after they made a tough call. They've done a really nice job now implementing the beginning stages of the plan to unwind the nonprofit. They think here at this fall, that they will be able to execute working with an antiques dealer locally, tag sale with all the items that the city does not want. We've already walked the property and walked Swanson House and the depot with them, mostly identified paper products and video cassettes as well, that are Clive specifics, some old maps, some really, really beautiful stuff that's going to be neat to share and archive, working with our friends at the library. We also picked out some pieces though, that are very more physical things that are period specific to the depot and part of Clive's story there, because we don't want to close the door in the future to doing some of that type of storytelling when we find a new home potentially for the depot building, which is again, very, very Clive specific. By the end of October, or excuse me, by the end of November, around Thanksgiving, Historical Society thinks they're still on track to mothball the facility, meaning we blow out the pipes and we wouldn't need to run heat to it through the winter months, which would be good. Now, if it proves that we'll do some damage by not maintaining a certain amount of heat, we can, we can certainly handle that. But, but it also, what it really means is that anything that would be damaged or anything that we want to keep, that we need to move out, all of that'll be out. We'll make sure that it's in a good condition to really keep it stable until we figure out what the future for the building is going to be. Historic Society also thinks they've got a path forward to move out the tracks and the caboose. Apparently there are brokers who like to sell these things to enthusiasts who like to keep them. And there's somebody in Fairfield that they've been talking to. So fingers crossed that they can get that piece of the work done, but they understand they're on the hook to get it done one way or. Final point, the existing lease with the Historical Society ends in February of 2025. Their goal is to have the entire nonprofit unwound at that point, which would also include if there is any fund, any funds left, they would disperse that to the city to potentially continue pursuing the mission of the Historical Society, telling Clive's various stories. So I'm very happy with the work that they've done and very appreciative to my partners in the Parks Department, Jeff Teal and Stefan Keller in the library, who were with me going through and looking at some of those materials that we'd like to keep for the city of Clive. They've done a really nice job.
Pete, I have a question. Has anyone talked with Sharon Osbourne to see if there's anything that's important to her that's among the assets?
I'll follow up with my, the board chair, Mike Alawis on that. I know that Sharon has been in touch with the board. This is a difficult change process for her and for others who have been very close to this and were close to the former mayor. I know they want to be respectful of that, respectful of how they do this so that they, they really honor all the people who have contributed in the past.
I think she and Les had a lot to do with acquiring some of the things that are there. So I'd hate to overlook that.
Good point. Couple other updates on some big projects moving in the city. Good point. Couple other updates on some big projects moving in the city. You'll see in Matt's email, a host of neighborhood meetings that are coming up. The first one on the docket will be our ribbon cutting for Indian Hills Woods that's next week. But please pay attention to the bottom of that email that comes out on Friday. So you can stay on top of all of these different touches coming up with your residents and businesses over the course of the next six weeks. One you may hear about from some residents, we've remobilized out in the area east of Alice's Road on this, for the stabilization work along Little Walnut Creek, the habitat restoration, and then ultimately working to get that trail back in in spring, summer of 2025. There have been delays with this project and we are hearing from more residents that they're sort of frustrated with the perception that Urbandale got their trail in before Clive has even started kind of preparing to put in the trail. The reason that's the case is that we're doing a lot more scope of work than Urbandale. Urbandale was just going in and replacing their trail. We're going in actually and stabilizing those stream banks, protecting property, protecting public infrastructure, and then restoring habitat as well. So it's hard to compare the two of them. But we are certainly sympathetic to the neighborhood because those trails are loved. And when they're not there, people feel some real heartache. And we want to make sure that we affirm that, acknowledge that, but also make sure they understand there is a path moving forward and they're going to have a great trail service not too far into the future. Finally, when we get to our next meeting in October, Molly and I will be bringing forward a recommendation on our mass notification tool. We've come across some interesting options to consider and actually some things that we hadn't considered when we first started this, when we're thinking about potentially two-way text, not just one-way text. So we look forward to that discussion when we get to October.
Very good. Any questions for Pete? Free gun. No report tonight, Mayor.
Ted? I get to make up for that. I've got a few things. So about a week and a half ago, the mayor, Matt, Richard and I all attended the Shadow Creek Pond Meeting. We also had a couple of DNR reps there with us. And that was very, very helpful. They, they added a lot of credibility to the things that we were saying and helped explain some of the science behind all the pond management. And I think they helped to keep the pitchforks at bay, right? So you know, we're basically, we have a new kind of chemical treatment plan that we're, we're instituting that were based off of the DNR's guidance, hopeful is going to make a big difference. We won't know that until what, late spring, maybe?
It's a proactive treatment.
Right. So it's more proactive as opposed to reactive. It's what we had been doing. Certainly plenty of questions around eration and fountains and things of that nature. You know, we asked for a little patience to try this new option. You know, a little grumbling with that because that's kind of what we did last year was ask for patience and but, you know, I think the majority were willing to, to go that route, but certainly by next summer, I think things are going to come to a head if it doesn't work. And so we're going to have to be, be prepared to deal with that. So certainly over the next year, you know, I think hopefully we're going to have some, some, some resolution to this and certainly the residents out there are expecting that. So I don't know, John, if you have any.
Do you want to comment on fountains? What we learned about fountains?
What did we learn about fountains?
DNR staffer.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think they just said they're, they're not very effective, right?
That they, they gum up and clog up pretty easily.
Right. So I.
He wouldn't recommend fountains anyway.
That helps them provide some credibility that they heard it from the DNR as opposed to us, right?
He was the one that answered it first.
Yeah. So that, that was positive. Eration is another story and is certainly an option. So I think that their position was you should go with the chemicals first and see how that works. And so, and that fits well with, with our strategy and with, with our budget for that matter. So.
And they also underscored the fact that each pond is different. So you have to treat, it's not a one size fits all. So.
Pay something depth of the pond and the geometry of it and all these different factors. So they said one treatment that works great at this pond, this pond over here doesn't work. So it's interesting. I mean, I, I certainly don't know much about that, but.
And balancing the fishery aspect too, that being a public fishing pond. That was, we talked a lot about that in terms of doing things that don't result in a fish kill too.
So overall, I think it was a good meeting. I think it was productive. Again, I think, I think most of the residents are in a wait and see mode. That's, that's their position. So. I don't know. Anything else on the ponds?
No, I think, I think you summarized it well, a productive meeting.
Yeah.
I think a couple of things I would add to that you're going to see in the fall here is we're going to get the mulch trail, the full, the mulch put in with the trail, the main trail spine around the pond. It'll still just be mowed paths for the fishing portion. We had Caleb, our supervisor, our natural resources team there, along with Jeff Teal and Richard, talking about the, the staff time that this council is putting towards these kinds of assets. So I emphasized that in terms of, you know, they were skeptical on the resourcing side and we were, I wanted to share with them that we are putting resources towards this. And we took some feedback too on something, few small things that they wanted to see a little bit different that we would look into. And so there's going to be some things happening this fall. And then really I'm anxious to see how this treatment regiment will work when we're in the springtime before anything is developed and getting it done proactively on that 21 day cycle that the DNR folks did a really good job of explaining to, to the folks that night and seeing if we aren't in the position like we were, you know, in late August here, early September. So.
Cause it does admittedly, at least when we were there, it looked bad. And I could see, I can understand why they were unhappy, you know, so.
And the DNR also underscored that the residents have a role to play as well.
Yeah, with the chemicals that they use and pond or pool discharges and all those kinds of things that, that they have a role to play as well. So that got stressed. So it's good. Icon Water Trails recently met one-on-one, the executive director Stephanie Opel. Unfortunately, just due to my schedule, I'd missed the last two board meetings. I was out of the country for one and out of the state for another. So she kind of brought me back up to speed on, on where things are at. Things are looking very good with respect to private fundraising. We're over 95% to our goal and expect to be at 100% by the end of the year. So the private sector is definitely doing their part to contribute to this and to, to its success and, and fund it. So that's, that's positive. All the projects that are underway are on track. Scott Avenue is the most visible one. That's, that's one where there's going to be the most recreation, right? So that's the rapids where you could, you could kayak and, you know, whitewater raft, if you will, you can do a little surfing. There's going to be a fish channel and fishing location there. There's dam mitigation. And then there'll be what's called uplands, which is kind of the, the, the ground area where it'd be the, the trail system will be connected to the entire Des Moines Trail system. There'll be some facilities there, things of that nature. So we did a tour of that. A group of us did a tour of that and it's definitely making some progress. It's still a ways away from, you know, and if you're not sure where the Scott Avenue is, if you know where Mullet's is, and then single speed breweries on the other side, so that whole area right there is where.
Beer's landmarks are all breweries.
Yeah, that's right. It's got beer and I know where it's at. So it's not my fault that those are there. But anyways, every day active construction going on down there and it, it's definitely making a lot of progress. The construction of the in-water is going to go through all of the whole construction season next year, 2025. And then that uplands area will be 2026 before that will be completed. So we still got, you know, a couple of years left of work, but, but it's, it's on, it's, it's making progress and on track and on, on budget and all those kinds of things. One thing I did want to mention with Icon, I can't remember if I reported this or not, but one of the services that Icon provides is a contract with the Conservation Corps where they'll go out and actually clean up our, our creeks. So when you have downed trees and all those kind of the, the obstructions that happen, they contract with the, the Conservation Corps to go out and help clear that. And they, I know they worked with Richard on this. And so they did that for about two and a half miles of Walnut Creek for us from the Aquatic Center entry point over here, all the way through the rest of the city. And, and so this is a few thousand dollars worth of work of value that we got at no additional cost because we're members of Icon. So. So just a nice little benefit that, that comes with that. And that's obviously in the future as well. One of the things I did talk to Stephanie about was having her come in once a year and briefing us as, as a, as a board and just giving us a, an annual update, much like Greg Edwards does and others do as well. So, so she committed to that and hopefully be setting that up with.
And she hasn't reached out yet, but I saw your email on that.
Yeah. So hopefully that'll happen here at some point in the near future. Clive Community Foundation met today. We officially set the, the goal for the grants this year at 55,000. Last year was 50,000. So we're, you know, upping that a little bit. To, to date, we've collected 23,000, but we have much more pledged. And there's some additional opportunities there. So we feel, we feel good about the, the prospects of me, meeting that $55,000 goal and exceeding last year's objectives. And then by November, we should have the list of, of grantees, of recipients that will be receiving the grant from CCF.
You're not giving out 100%, are you?
No.
Pulling back for.
Correct. Yeah, we have, yeah, that's right. Yep. And then there's different funds too, for different things, right? So there's, there's a significant fund, for example, for Greenbelt Landing, right? So, so there are different funds that, that are funded. This is for individual Clive organizations that, that are worthy for receiving a grant from, from the foundation. And then last thing, MPO met today as well. They, the MPO Policy Committee approved the ICAP grant request for the two and a half million for the I-3580 Hickman interchange. So it's the ICAP grant. So that just means that the MPO has approved it so that it can then go to the DOT to be reviewed. And so it's been, it's been kind of sanctioned, if you will, by the MPO Policy Committee. And then just organizationally, we, we passed what's called a human capital plan that is where the, the consultant who helped with the hiring of Dylan, the executive director, also was retained to look at the organizational structure, the, the salary matrix, the job positions and all that, and just make sure that it's aligned with other MPOs and competitive with, you know, planner positions with Polk County and with the City of Des Moines and things of that nature so that we have the proper organizational structure. And just as an aside, the salary matrix that they're going to be implementing is based off of the Clive matrix that I provided to them as a model that they could use. And so they decided to adopt that. So that's it.
Very good. Any questions for Ted or comments? Well done Theodore.
Well, we had metro waste too, but I don't know what happened there.
I don't either.
A couple of things, several new businesses here in Clive, several new ribbon cuttings. The mayor and I were at one yesterday. So some good things happening, some businesses moving in and the Clive Chamber's been very, very active and in promoting new businesses. Also Pete and I attended the Great Des Moines Partnership and their governance meeting, seeing some great verbiage that that Clive had, had proposed into their proposal. So very pleased with that, productive meetings and seeing more language such as fair taxation and mentioning lost and, and TIP as things that we're very concerned about as well. So we feel some productive conversations and, and at least our perspective, we're getting a point across. That's it, Mayor.
Central Iowa Water Works will be interviewing, full day interviews Tuesday and Wednesday next week. The six finalists for the executive director position. So you won't be able to reach me very easily those two days.
Are those names public or no?
They are not. I don't even know yet. We haven't.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
And we're asked to keep it confidential.
Sure.
So that'll be Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. They have hired an executive assistant. She previously been at Guards.
She got smart and moved on.
I didn't say that. But they're happy to have her. So anyway, things are moving. Had PFM's done the analysis on the rate structure and such. And I left you a copy and you a copy.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
Anyway, good things are happening.
The Bravo Board had a board social early last week and the director Sally Dix pulled me aside to ask if we were having regional discussions because of knowing that that's happening in so many communities. And I said, it did come up at our strategic planning discussion that there hadn't been any action taken, but there was concern voiced about a number of our allied organizations that we feel haven't necessarily spoken up when the legislature is looking to impact city revenues. And it is requiring us to have that reflection on how our resources are used. So I just wanted to share that that conversation had happened.
Hey Susan?
Yes.
Don't mean to interrupt, but so in my one-on-one with Stephanie at Icon, she asked me the same question. So that word is getting out there. For better or worse, but I got asked the same question.
It's a good way to frame it though, the way you framed it.
Yeah, I like that Susan.
I just think you can simplify it that way and it's true.
Yes, very true.
And it also kind of throws back at them, right? What we've been talking about.
Right.
We need partners out there.
Right. Exactly. Well, then the full board met on Wednesday and Matthew McKinney from West Des Moines is the chair now. And I'm very glad to have a public sector representative chairing that. It's been a little while since that's happened and I think the timing is good.
I don't do a good job too.
Definitely were references to concerns about impacts to local governments. He invited conversation with any of the public members. So they are still planning to hold a gala in February next year and opportunity to invest in that will be coming out in October. So, and did you get a chance to update on the Homeless Coordinating Council at all?
I'm not.
At the last meeting?
Go ahead.
It's just worth knowing that. Pretty impactful meeting. I welcomed it, that Ted is participating and was able to listen in online. I guess the main outcome from that meeting is the Governance Committee has been established and that's as people didn't necessarily remember it, but it says outwind in the bylaws. And two mayors, Russ from West Des Moines and Bob Andewig from Urbandale were named to it along with a city official from Des Moines. So I think that'll be good. And that's it for now.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Michael?
Who report?
Anything legally related?
Nothing this week.
Just a few quick items. Again, I was at the ICAMA conferences last week. Appreciate the, the council's support and that professional development. It was good to go through the sessions and, and connect with a number of colleagues. Wanted to remind the council too, again, a week from tonight, we'll have the ribbon cutting at Indian Hills Woods at 5:30. The invite's also gone out to the neighborhood as of today. We'll have some plantings that'll be fresh in the ground, the last round of plantings right before that ribbon cutting. So everything should look really nice. Also wanted to mention, this was right after the last council meeting. The mayor, Pete, Mayor Proton McCoy and I attended a meeting with the Greater Des Moines Partnership with some of these conversations that we were just talking about. Had a very, very energizing two hours of conversation regarding some of these subjects. And I would agree with you, Councilmember Weaver, it is, the word is definitely out there about these regionalism conversations that are occurring amongst all the member, all the communities in the metro area. We had a good discussion about, again, under, making sure the cities want to make sure we're understanding our return on investment for whether it's as small as the partnership at 15,000 to well over 200,000 and entities like Bravo and Catch Des Moines. So it was a very good discussion. They've been, the partnership's been fairly active just even since that meeting. The mayor and I have been invited to attend a kind of a property tax roundtable right before their regional summit next Thursday in the morning. It's going to be a number of city officials. Again, I think it's under this vein of educating their other investors, the non-city investors in terms of what's going on and how the, these property tax legislative proposals, both enacted and potentially ones that might be coming at this next legislative session are impacting cities. They also, we're also going to get them scheduled, the partnership to come in before you all do a little presentation on where they're at with their organization and their. To do a presentation on where they're at with their organization and their various uh services that they offer. Uh, whether it's mainly economic development and some other activities. And so we're going to get them in front of you here probably in the next month. Um, they wanted to come in front of the council. Uh, so that's uh some good uh activity and discussions happening with partnership. And then of course, as Councilmember Klein referred to, Pete and himself going to the the government policy council meeting. And seeing some, you know, reception to some of these uh language changes for them to consider. Again, we'll see if that's what the end product looks like. That's always the big question, right? Uh, but I think there is definitely, um, the their ears are open now, I think, to a lot of these conversations that cities are having. And and there's definitely a lot of chatter going on around the region uh related to this. And I appreciate how Councilmember Judkins framed it, because I think that is a great way. Um, that's how I've framed it to a number of folks who have asked me about it. Is that this is, you know, where we we do need um some partners and and they they are all stakeholders and the investments that cities make. And how can we, you know, represent what local community, what we're doing in our local communities to this legislature? So I think that's a great way to frame it.
Cause you guys would have been proud. Pete gave him a little thunder and a little lightning. He basically said, you want thunder or you want light?
So yes, it was a, it was, it was a good discussion and uh more to come on that. And um, uh, so there's a lot of that happening with the regional entities. I also uh, Councilmember Michael Laney and I received a request to have uh Dart come and provide an update to you all in the next, before the end of the year. So we'll be having some of these coming before you um at your future council meetings.
Their Dart meeting.
Um, so again, I I I see it as a a positive sign that again, these regional entities want to make sure they're in front of you. And talking about ways that they're investing dollars, you know, whether it's through the property tax levy that we have with Dart. Or these uh direct contributions that we have with other organizations, so I think that's good to see. So you'll be seeing that on upcoming agendas.
Matt, uh, can you remind us of that Dart process? Is it the date you send the letter or is it always triggered for January one? Meaning if I, if we sent the letter today, the clock starts January one or it starts today?
Clock starts January one. So you have to indicate, um, if you're like Pleasant Hill did, they did it earlier than they needed to. But they, that was the choice that they made. They could have done it in December if they chose to. The clock would not have changed. It's still the same. It's still eighteen months from that January one, so for in their case, it's July one of twenty twenty-six.
I I do think we should have, you know, workshop or whatever, a very serious discussion of where we're headed with this. Because you missed that January one date, you're on the clock an entire another year. And you know, it does not hurt to send a message if that's what the council wants to do. You can always reverse it. You can always back it up. You can always take that off the table, but you can't always put it back on the table with meaning.
The one thing I will say though is that might have a domino effect right now.
Yep, yep.
Which, to be aware of that.
And I think that's part of the purpose, right?
That could be a good thing, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, but.
From what I heard out of the, that the newspaper wrote, the mayor's already started that domino uh effect. And I just, I I don't think that we should overlook that clock. You know, you can, you can remove that letter, you can resend it, but you have another year before you can put it back on. And so it, I hate to stall it and then say March. They don't have an answer to budgets. They don't have an answer to movements, because this is the same story for, I'm not kidding, eight years.
But I think, I mean, the the letter from the mayor is, I think, laid it out well, right? Like, if we don't have an answer from Des Moines by December first.
We write the letter.
We have no, yeah, I mean, they're forcing our hand essentially.
But they, but I, and I agree, I just think this council needs to make that decision. The mayors did that with, with, with the dialogue by us. But we've never made an official, a mayor write the letter, right? And the mayor can't write that letter, can, but shouldn't write that letter without, you know, not a formal vote. Maybe it can be a formal vote, but it without a open discussion, a hard discussion and saying, let's send it. If it was my decision only, I'd send it today, right? And let the chips fall, uh because that dominoes is going to help, I think, get the message across. Again, it can be rescinded and backed up, but saying, you better start getting on the horse and stop wasting time and telling me we need to do more studies. More studies, more studies. They've stalled this thing with studies for eight years. I mean, I, as an alternate, I may ask that letter, write that letter of asking how many studies truly have been done in ten years? In the last decade uh of Dart stuff.
Look, I'm, I'm not a fan of the studies. I mean.
Yeah.
I I agree with you on that, but I I think part of this is, are we directing that discussion? In the right direction, I guess, right? Like, so Des Moines has an outsized influence on the future of Dart. And and to your, to your point, I think, right? Like, it might start that domino effect where Des Moines starts thinking, oh, okay, it's not a bluff. Right, or something else.
I think, I think we at least need to have a workshop or have the hard conversation right here. I I agree. And whether we send it or not, I think the council and the mayor along with staff, we need to look at that January one deadline. At least ha- have the real in-depth discussion on it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that that makes sense. I just, again, I just want to caution that.
Understand.
You know.
I don't see the risk because you can resend. I see the risk of not sending it because now you can't get out. So those damn auto renewals that lawyers put in contracts. That suddenly you miss the window that has to be done in thirty days or within eighty-two days. But it can't be done within, you know, before thirty-five days and not after.
And I don't.
And it's like, horseshit, just send the letter and say we're canceled a year advance and now it's done.
I don't.
And I don't miss the window.
I don't disagree with having the discussion. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to say, let's send the letter, which I don't think you're saying, like, send the letter today, right?
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Depending on the, on the, on the discussion.
And and depending on what Des Moines, I mean, there's a lot of things involved, but let's have the discussion.
And I guess the only other thing I would add is. It might be worth waiting a little bit to set our discussion until we've heard or at least gotten some sort of feedback from, from potentially what Des Moines. Cause.
But that's what I caution is, is let's not.
The Viva study is supposed to be done by.
Supposed to be, supposed to be.
We could, we could influence.
I mean, we just heard, heard PFM, who I have entire, a lot of respect for and and use them in my day job and all that. It's great, but just said, eh, it all matters. I mean, the consulting matters. If if this happens, we get it done. If this doesn't happen, we don't get it done. If this happens, I mean, I've been hearing excuses from Des Moines and from Dart, mostly Dart, for nine years that I was on that board. And I think we just need to say, December first, the mayor said we'd make a decision. Let's set it for December first as a.
It'd be your, it'd be your December council meeting, so just, just like Pleasant Hill did. If the this council decides that you want to do that same action, you have that, the, your last chance. For this calendar year will be that council meeting in December or a special meeting if you wanted to call it before.
Dart has too many special meetings. We're not having one for Dart.
So December fourteenth, I think it is, would be your uh that council meeting. Cause the council would have to make a a voted action per the twenty-eighty uh agreement to send that. Based, same thing that Pleasant Hill did here, and then you'll see that correspondence in your next packet.
December twelfth and maybe perhaps we could, we could have a uh, perhaps we could have a uh, you know, work study session.
Like the November meeting, we can, and I, and and I'll tell you, before the end of the year, Amanda, the CEO of Dart is going to be before you. So I'm guessing it's probably, might even be that council meeting where you want to have some of that discussion, so. Um, but anyway, that, you know, that's going to come either in the October or November meeting, I would say, is I'll have Amanda here, so as well.
Well, let me say, we are not alone. I mean, these discussions are happening all across the metro with other councils concerning Dart. And again, all the regional entities, so.
Rightfully so.
Stay tuned, there'll be, again, there are a number of other meetings that I can't talk about just yet, but there are a lot of them going. I think I speak for the council in saying, we're committed, committed to regionalism. But we can't carry the whole weight of a dart.
And I, I, I've said that to other commissioners, I've said it to Amanda, like, we're not against regionality, but it has to be fair. Can't be Clive or suburbs just shoulder everything and then everyone else is off the hook or vice versa.
And value driven.
And again, we're talking right now, the contribution is in excess of a million dollars, correct? So I mean, of, you know, we were talking about.
But our, that's where our tax levy in Clive produces.
Twenty-one riders a day.
Well, right, again, we don't know the exact rider.
I don't know the exact.
No, it could be less.
Paratrans is a hundred and ninety-nine unique riders, fixed route. Yeah, that's a little bit more up in the air as to what the unique.
But just the numbers break down to about twenty-one a day on average.
Yeah, or less.
Yeah.
I mean, a million can go a long ways. I see more value in a Bravo and a CVB. Than I do the direct value for a Dart for our community. That's just my personal. Do I believe there needs to be transit for the unserved, underserved? Absolutely.
But Bravo's not going to do that. I mean, it's not in their scope.
No, 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 but I'm. A million dollars.
Let's look at other transportation alternatives. Mike, I know we've had the conversation too. Million dollars, we could give them all free Ubers. I mean, for for that or come up with some type of ride share system. They've got the the Dart on demand. I don't know, there's a lot, there's a lot of different opportunities. I just think we need to have that discussion.
No, yeah, and I don't disagree with the discussion. It's just Dart on demand may not be an option if come, you know, January or July of twenty twenty. Yeah, six.
Well, I think we have general consensus that we want to talk about it.
Yeah.
Uh, consider potential action uh in the month of December at our December meeting, so I think it's pretty clear. Other items that we wish to discuss this evening?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I was at the Iowa League of Cities Conference last week and there was discussion about how they don't have a lobbying team yet. What are you hearing about that?
Um, I know that I was a part of um some virtual interviews for kind of their semifinalist group. And I know that they're doing in-person interviews and uh next week and hoping to make a decision within the next two weeks. Um, and I, I have a sense of who the top two candidates are. And I, I agree with Alan's assessment of that. Um, so we'll, you will have, you likely will hear something in the next two weeks.
Councilwoman, the other.
It's not destined another, is it?
They never can confirm or deny any of that.
For the love of Pete. Moving right on, you had something, Pete?
I just said, uh, and Councilwoman Judkins, I think that you could probably help uh with this information too. The league did work up in advance of their annual meeting, a list of some priorities that where they wanted to be proactive in this coming legislative session. And then none of those were um necessarily property tax related. They were, property taxes in general were set aside because everybody knows that that is so all encompassing for cities. That it will require its own set of priorities and and strategies. But Councilwoman, did they approve that agenda or that that sort of slate of legislative items to be proactive on?
I don't know. I wasn't there on Friday.
Okay.
I, which I think was when they did that meeting, so.
It was just a short meeting that they'd set up for that, only an hour long. Um, the reason I know about it was that I participated a little bit in sort of offering some feedback from Clive's perspective on what those priorities might be. But none of them were what I consider some of the, the big high-scale concepts, counsel, to counsel my client. Like we've been discussing with uh partnerships priority list, but still important things like sidewalk liability. That's one of them that was there that might have a legislative fix this coming session. If the council would pursue that or uh weigh in on that one. But I do believe that the league is intending to try and do something on legislative front.
To protect the cities.
To restore, I guess, what was the status quo, was from their perspective. Where the liability would fall back uh not on the city.
Totally opposed to that. Very good. Thank you for your opinion. Anything else we need to discuss tonight? Otherwise, we will adjourn at seven twenty-three.